Good evening, welcome to this work-study session of Independent School District 624. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Beloit here. Chapman?
Here.
Ellison here. Fahey here. Muller?
Here.
Newmaster?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
All right, with that, we'll get into our first discussion item, the Big Sleuth update. Mr. Garrison?
Great, thank you. I've got several people joining me here today, so you guys want to come on up and have a seat? I'll let each of these fine people choose themselves when we get to their part. But while they're getting settled in, so a couple of notes. I think the first one is, we've really tried this year to think about how do we involve voice in decision-making. And our strategic plan obviously is a huge part of what drives our strategic direction, but there are other parts that do that as well that really drive the direction that our district's going. Obviously, the facilities planning work is part of that. And the Big Sleuth is really about how do we engage student voices, or I'm sorry, staff voices, to really find those blind spots in our organization. So we put our best thinking forward, but what are some other issues that emerge when we ask staff to solve problems for us? And the Big Sleuth is certainly not alone in this this year. We've made a huge effort to engage staff voice in decision-making this year. So if you tally up everyone that's participated in the strategic plan, in facilities planning, in the Big Sleuth, in all those site plans, and in the equity statement work, that is almost 1,400 individual spots available for being involved in decision-making in our district. There is decidedly overlap in that, so it's not necessarily 1,400 individuals. But really, I think the message is clear that if you wanted to be involved in decision-making and have your voice heard in the district, this is a very good year for you. And it goes well with the goal of the Big Sleuth, which was to elevate, or to bring more voices into decision-making and have a system that elevates that. So we started out just kind of pitching this idea at convocation. We had a little teaser postcard that we sent out, a funny little video that we shared. And then we went around to every staff meeting and talked to every department to make sure that people really understood what was happening, knew how they could get involved, and felt an investment and an understanding of the process. That was very successful because we had a huge number of ideas submitted, a lot of people participating, and just a massive number of votes that people tallied in their work. In November, once all that voting was done, we selected six ideas, a big idea, a medium idea, and a small idea, and I'm sorry, a big idea, two medium ideas, and three small ideas. And the people here are going to talk a little more about that when we get to that point. As I mentioned to you earlier this year, we followed the design thinking process in this work. So once people identified a problem with their solution, we really said, okay, that resonated with people, let's go back to the root of the problem and really dig into why did that resonate, and let's use kind of empathy to think through that. So in December, they went around and interviewed a lot of different people. Then in January, they tried to kind of define their problem again and ideate on that. And then really February through now has been about prototyping and testing our different ideas, and you'll hear a little more of that in just a minute. There was a lot of intentionality around this process, and part of that is around the design teams themselves. So we had the individual idea champions, they were great, but they also got to pick a staff colleague that they wanted to work with. They were assigned a couple of design thinking coaches. These were our own staff that were trained in design thinking. And then we also asked them to pick three to five students, ideally students from underrepresented groups who could bring some diversity of thinking into this group as well. And that intentional collaboration between staff and students is a really important part about how your year's going to shape. So when our big kickoff day, which was in January, just a few pictures of that, and you can see from just these three pictures that I'm sharing, some really honest collaboration between staff and students. This wasn't like a token thing where we bring students in to say that they were there. They really shared equal weight in the conversation and decision-making on those days, and I think that that is part of why this process has been so impactful. So the six ideas that I mentioned, the one big, two medium, and three small ideas, covered a wide variety of topics. We're just going to take a look at each one of them here, and for a few of them, people will speak about their process. So Colleen had the mentally healthy bears. And Colleen, I think I'm just going to turn it over to you and let you share what you want to share about your idea.
Yeah, great. I'm Colleen Kopp. I teach 4th grade at Onika. And my idea centered around mental health. And going into it felt really huge, how do you tackle something like mental health? And through the design thinking process, we kind of ended up thinking about preventative versus reactive as far as mental crises. So we centered on mindfulness, and for those of you who don't know, mindfulness is about paying attention to your thoughts and feelings, and your environment, and your body, and things that are going on around you without judgment. We talk about it in 4th grade as resetting your brain, calming your body, and de-escalating some of your stress, or anger, or big feelings. So we had created and tried to define different tiers for mental health so that we could provide supports for each of those tiers. Tier one being things we can do in the classroom, for the entire classroom as a whole. And that is the mindfulness exercises. So during the month of March especially, my class focused on doing mindfulness exercises three times a day. So it was a couple minutes in the morning, after lunch, and at the end of the day. Just quick little things that we taught them how to do. And then from there, we kind of interviewed kids, and they said, you know, they enjoyed it as far as, you know, they were able to reset their brains and calm down when they were nervous about something. They ended up using it at different points throughout the school year, too. Since then, we have added to other classrooms to join us. So there are now three classrooms using mindfulness strategies three times a day. That's Onika.
Yeah, that's great, thank you. And I think one of the things I love about, I mean, first of all, it's cool to see this work in your classroom, and that's like, it's so great. I love the partnership that went into it, but I think also just the fact that you took something really huge and said, all right, when it comes to actually prototyping this thing, what can this look like in a 4th grade classroom, and then let's build it from there, is a really, it's just a great thing, so thank you very much for that. Moving on to the medium ideas, a couple. There was one that honestly seemed pretty straightforward, the top one, that said everyone deserves to be clean, which we thought was just going to be to put a washer and a dryer in at the ALC. And when the students came to speak about that one, it became very clear that they wanted, they wanted some life skills classes. And so that, this one actually split into a couple different strategies. They're still working on getting a washer and a dryer. Turns out plumbing for and wiring a washer and a dryer in a public school building isn't just something that just happens at the drop of a dime, or at the drop of four months, as we know, but we'll get there. But the other, I think maybe even potentially more impactful thing that they're working on is a curriculum that's really serving a whole that kids said that they were experiencing in their education. So we're real excited about that. The next one here, Delance School Start Times to Align with Research, took on a really big topic, and again, has tried to find little ways of tackling that. One of the common themes that came out in all of these projects was around staff and student relationships. And they've really looked at how can we build flexibility into our schedule to make that happen? And, you know, I mean, I think there will be the potential in the coming years in White Bear Lake with the potential of new facilities and stuff, to look at as we change buildings, how do we, how do we think about school start times and, you know, boundaries and that kind of stuff? And I think this one, the main intent of this one won't go away, but they've shifted to think, as Colleen has, about how can this really be impactful in one place? And then moving on to our three small ideas, we're going to put yours last, just because we have slides for you guys in a minute. And so Troy, you worked on the flexible PD, want to come up with that a little bit?
Yeah, my name's Troy Strand. I'm an innovation coach at Sunrise Park Middle School in South Campus. And I worked with Kelly Sokolowski, a kindergarten teacher at Willow, to explore what could be done to provide a little bit more flexibility in PD offerings for staff. And so the prototype that we came up with when we talked with, interviewed a lot of teachers, and found that there was just a desire for a little bit more, just kind of personalization to those professional development offerings. But while talking with teaching and learning, we know that there are state mandates that are required, certain number of days have to be offered by the district that have to be in-person. And so the equity piece was ensuring that there weren't teachers in one building who were able to get certain things while other teachers in the same building were not, because building goals are so important to those PD offerings. So Chris Strife, the principal at Willow, was kind enough to allow teachers to kind of get together to build kind of a survey of what offerings they would like next year, what do we think is a priority at Willow Lane? We're a very unique school, what do we need, what do our students need? And what kind of teachers can step up to provide that training for the staff? So they're creating a schedule for next year that teachers can kind of choose which days they want to experience different PD offerings, but those staff members will provide those trainings multiple times so that they can get better each time, and still provide that flexibility that the teachers are looking for.
Cool, thanks. And then the one about teachers need pictures, don't need pictures, families do, was a push to get us to give pictures to students on free and reduced lunch rather than to give them to teachers, which happens now at our Teacher Picture Day, you get, you know, a packet of teachers, pictures that teachers don't pay for. We actually thought this was something that Life Touch was already doing, we just weren't taking advantage of it. It turns out, they should run their own Big Sleuth, because they were like, yeah, we've talked about that idea, we've banded that around, but we've never actually pulled it off, and they're super excited to partner with us to make this happen. And at least the way it's looking right now, although we're in, we've got a meeting scheduled with them next week to talk about more specifics, it looks like teachers will get a voucher, and you can either use that voucher, get your own packet, as teachers have done in the past, or you can donate it into a pool which will go to students on free and reduced lunch. We think most teachers will. But, you know, I'm sure you have fond memories of your classroom pictures. So we're really optimistic about where that one goes. And then the other one, Power Play, John and Mary, actually were our, they're two projects, they both submitted separate ideas around recess, and they were the two highest vote getting in all, in all the system. Those two were the highest. So they agreed to work together on one kind of super idea, and I'll come tell you about it.
Okay. I'm John Barnes, 2nd grade teacher at Otter Lake. And this has been a really great process. When we just submitted the ideas, we didn't really know what the whole process would be, but it's been really cool to work through the design thinking process. And like Mark said, with the kids involved, has been really cool as well. One of the things we noticed in elementary is right now, students are given about 15 minutes of recess. I think a couple of elementaries might have made some adjustments with that, but in general, 15 minutes of recess. And we just thought that we wanted to give students more of an opportunity for unstructured time, not necessarily recess of kids go out and do whatever they want, but that teachers might be able to interact and develop relationships more with students during unstructured time. For me, I make a lot better connection and a lot different connections with students when I'm playing tetherball, or taking a walk and talking about their weekend than I do just having a reading group. So that was one of the things that we wanted to do with our recess and adding it. We ended up calling it bear time right now, at least at Otter Lake, as we're trying it. Three classrooms, three 2nd grade classrooms at Otter are trying bear time, an extra 15-minute unstructured time in the morning and in the afternoon, where students can either choose to go outside or inside, if we have the teachers to be able to supervise and monitor that, and give kids the choice of what they want to do to, you know, have energy and run around, but also maybe draw, or read, or write, or just talk with teachers, things like that. And we've seen just great success with it. One of my parents sent me an email, just a note about bear time after we implemented it, and I just wanted to share that with you. It said, "Bear time has been instrumental in providing our 2nd grader the sensory and movement breaks she needs to allow her to come back into the classroom regulated and ready to focus and learn. As an added benefit, it has also given her extra opportunities to grow important social skills. I strongly recommend that this be continued to be offered at OLE as a strategy to helping our students be successful in the classroom." So that sums up just how it's been this year. And we also know that a couple of elementaries have put it into their strategic plan, and they are prototyping it as we speak, as a school-wide thing. So we're interested in how that feedback will go as well.
I'm Mary Malloy. I teach 1st grade at Hugo Elementary, and this is a topic that's been a passion of mine for a long time. I've just found, I've been teaching about 20 years, just the academic rigor increase, which is great, but then I also feel like with little kids, their brains get overloaded, and they're not really available for learning. So trying to find that balance is tricky, and I think those movement breaks, unstructured, are so important for the kids. My son was coming home, you know, he loves school, but he was complaining that, well, we don't have enough recess. So I encouraged him to actually, I said, well, I work in the district, we all have the schedule, you know, how much time are you getting? And it was 12 to 15 minutes on average that they're getting. And he's an active guy, and I know that that was hard for him. And I saw this aim in a lot of my students as well, and I just really saw some of them weren't feeling as connected with their social, their friendships. And I also wanted that time, like John said, to connect with them on a different level, rather than just talking about books, interguided reading groups, and, which is important, too. But I just, when this opportunity came up, thank you, Mark, I was so excited, and I know this is not an innovative idea, but I just think it's important and really what's best for kids. So at Hugo, our 1st grade team has been, all of us have been on board with testing this, and we each do 30 solid minutes of bear time a day. Some teachers are breaking it up depending on their schedule, 15 in the morning, 15 in the afternoon. I do mine at the end of the day from 2:15 to 2:45. That's when I found my students really needed that time. And just amazing things have happened socially and academically with my class. Some of my students that I have that are a little more at risk and not as regulated just on a daily basis, their behaviors have decreased significantly. They are making friendships that I just was not sure that that was going to happen at the beginning of the year, and it's just been, I could almost cry thinking about it. They've come a long way. And also just that time of day, like I said, is so hard from, we all joke, 2:45 on with 3rd graders, that's kind of tricky. But they could come back and have a nice writing block, and we just entered our day and such a calm, focused note. So it's been really positive. I get emails often from parents just thanking me for this opportunity, and it's not me, but just thanking us for doing it. So I thought I would also share an email unsolicited, but I really thought this was important. The mom said I could share it. So Aaron loves bear time. He talks all about the football he played, and the fun he has with his friends. I 100% believe having more of this time outside has made a huge difference in Aaron. He went from having weekly migraines in kindergarten, not wanting to go to school, to looking forward to now playing with his friends outside. The kids have long days, and bear time breaks up the day and gives the kids something to look forward to in the afternoon. Thank you so much for doing this for the kids. I'm really thankful again, Mark, for this opportunity.
Thank you, it's so cool. I think if you think back to what I said at the start of this presentation about staff identifying blind spots in our organization, the fact that this resonated so much with staff across our district, and then you hear John and Mary's passion around this, it's really clear why this is a really big topic for White Bear Lake. And you may know that we're not the only district that does this. We actually work with a collaborative of people organized by this group called the Innovate K-12 that does this work. They actually recognize us for two achievements this year in our deployment. One of those goes to you, John, actually, for getting, of all of the ideas that went through the, like, 45 districts around the nation that are using this, John's idea, which really varies up by like a percentage. But John, you got this certificate for having the top idea in Minnesota, which is so.
Wow.
So that's, yeah.
Good job, Mary.
You can share that. Yeah, so in terms of staffing, and the percentage of staff engagement, that's really awesome. And then we got, as a district, an award for staff engagement, which, you can hang up that way. But by having staff commenting so much on ideas, we had the most comments of any group. And I just think it meant that after those ideas were put in, staff were in there saying like, hey, this resonates with me, or have you, you know, have you thought about connecting with this person? And that's really cool, just validation of our process. So anyway, thanks to all of you. Just have a couple more slides here, so you can stay with me for a minute. I want to talk a little bit about next steps, and there, obviously, I won't be carrying this work on as I'm moving on to other places, but there are a lot of people that have worked on this. And just this week, I've spoken to Tarja Ben-Singh, and Ansh Nelson, and Troy Strand about their continued work. They've been really a core part of our development of this, and they'll continue with that, and certainly the person in my role, and, you know, other people who carry on this process. But Troy, I want to talk a little bit about kind of where we're at with these current projects and what that looks like.
Sure, yeah. So most of our projects right now are in that prototype phase. And it doesn't always look exactly how we thought the idea would look at the very beginning of the year, as we kind of run into non-negotiables that are just circumstances beyond our control. Those are the things that we are testing in small groups, or at one school, or in groups of students or staff. So right now, we're prototyping that, and we're testing it to make sure that it's something that's viable, that can work in the future, and that could be scaled upward. So right now, the testing, a lot of it involves not only deploying it and looking at how it works, but measuring its success, and really talking with the people that we interviewed at the very beginning of that process. Those empathy interviews where we ask questions of people like, what is your experience like every day, trying to get into their frame of mind? We want to talk with those people and make sure that those individuals that we talk to who expressed a need that was not being met, are finding that this solution is meeting that need. And if it's not, our ego is at the door, and we're redesigning these things, and we're seeing what we can do to make it even better. And it's just this iterative process that continues, because it never really finishes, you know? It's, I mean, if you think as a teacher that you have a curriculum that's perfect, you're just not right, you know? You continue to build it, and to tweak it, and to refine it. And that's just because our needs change throughout the years. And so our students and our staff members who have been impacted by these six solutions are going to continue to give us that feedback and make sure, you know, this is working, and this is working, but I'm still not really seeing this problem being solved. So that's what we're going to continue to do as we plan for next year's launch.
And just before I, John and Mary didn't mention it, but there's other schools also prototyping their idea right now, so it's not just happening at their two schools. But this is happening in a pretty wide scale.
Yeah, so we'd like to continue this work next year. We're adding a stuff that Mark's going to get into a little more detail about at the beginning, which is that checking bias. We really, the strategic plan for our district and all of our site plans have really honed in on equity, and, you know, respecting the dignity of all different students and staff members, as really central to the work that we're doing. And so making sure that we are seeing who we are as one small facet of the entire White Bear Lake area schools community is really important before we even begin those empathy interviews with our students and our staff members.
Great, thank you. And then even though we present the design thinking process as being linear, but it can often look a little more like this, which, but that's okay, the messiness of it is all right. But I think the reason that I like this is it's inherently optimistic. It asks like, how might we do this thing? And then it tackles, from that perspective, and I think that's a really exciting way to look at issues within any organization. So I think that's really fun. And this idea of checking bias that Troy mentioned, came out of a conversation that we had with someone who does a lot of work around equity and design thinking process. And it really resonated with me that day that we spent working on the equity statement, of really thinking, are we really bringing the right ideas to the table? So obviously, the people who dig into planning of next steps will have their own mark on what this process looks like, but one possibility is to have, to change the Big Sleuth around next year, so that we don't just get people resubmitting those same 130-some ideas that didn't get chosen this year, but then maybe we have staff pair with a student who, who they feel like, the system's not working for this child, for whatever reason, let me think about how I could pair with them to really advance an idea. To me, that would be the way to kind of check your bias and really make sure you're looking at this through a student lens. So with that, any questions?
Questions? I just want to thank you all for your work. This seems to be working very well, and we look forward to continuing to hear about it.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to discussion item B2, which is community survey results from the Morris Leatherman Company. Mr. Wolf?
Thank you. Good evening. For the past month, we've been working with the Morris Leatherman Company, and specifically Peter Leatherman, to prepare a second community survey. You may recall that Peter was last with us in January, and he presented on survey results that were, survey that was conducted in late November. Tonight, he'll report on the survey that was completed two weeks ago, and I'll just turn it over to him.
Take it away. Pleasure to be back here with you now with some more specific data. If you remember, last time I was out here, it was more of a pre-planning survey, and setting the guardrails of what the community thought about the district and about potential facilities requests moving forward. And now we have some very specific data to go through. To remind everybody, the methodology, on this survey, because we're testing a referendum package at this point, a specific question, we talked to a larger cell size of residents. And the key on that is in an off-year election, only about 30 to 35% vote. And so we needed a large enough cell size to look at likely voters. And that's why we go to the 625 sample. Now, the 625 sample also allows us, gives us an additional point in the margin of error, but that's not the critical piece, it's the likely voters. And we'll look at the likely voters at the end, and where they are at at this point in time. The interviews, as Tim mentioned, this is very fresh data. May 2nd to May 10th, average interview time of 17 minutes. Non-response rate, once we found them at home, 4%. They were willing to talk. Over half were set up with interviews, since the weather was, well, was kind of nice that week, I think, in Minnesota. Like I said, the results are projectable to plus or minus 4%. Cell phones only, households in the sample, 44%. Landline only, 13%. The remainder have a combination. Put up the demographics just to show you the representation and how the residents are stratified. No major shifts greater than three points from the last fall survey, so, which is a positive, within the margin of error. Residential longevity came in at about 13 years. That's the first four bars on the demographics chart. 18% indicated they had children, preschool children in the household. 33% had children attending the White Bear Lake School District. 62% were empty nesters. Now, empty nesters can also, it's not just those that have already left the nest, you're going to have those that haven't started the nest yet. Young family, young couples and singles that don't have any kids. 31% were community education users. Renters, approximately 20% of the sample. The average value home, this is self-asscribed, sometimes people overinflate a bit, and I think they did just a bit. Surprisingly, they were pretty close, came in at about 300,000. I think the district numbers bear out at about 275,000. Continuing with the demographics, the age distribution, basically 20% in each of the five categories. The median is just short of college education for attainment. 49% were college graduates, while 19% were high school graduates or less. You have, the split on the financially stressed versus financially comfortable is following pretty close. You're a little more comfortable here than we've been finding across the state of Minnesota since last January. And this, I will put the caveat on, this survey was done May 10th. Last week was a very volatile week at a macro level with the economy. And we just had a district that I ran that was phoned last week that had 50% saying they were financially stressed, where six months ago, they had 34%. So there are macro issues happening out there that can affect, you know, there were a series of unsuccessful referendums last Tuesday, right in the midst of some economic turmoil. So you're following the trend that we see, but we don't know if that trend is going to change and how it's going to shift as the national economy plays into effect. And then finally, the demographics, we look at party ID and ideology. 2% were Democrat in this, in the district, 25% were independents, 42% conservative, and moderates and liberals, about the same, 30%. moderates and liberals, about the same, 30%. Women and men, if you recall from last time, that's intentional. We balance it, if we just talked to who's answering the phone, it's 70% women. So we asked for the person whose birthday is closest to the date we're calling so that we could get the balance of 50/50. And then the area stratification, 36% in the city, 18% in Badness, 19% in the township, 19% Hugo and 9% in the remaining communities in the district. So before I go on the data, any questions on methodology, demographics, anything?
I don't think so.
Good. All right. We ask a few atmospheric questions upfront, just to, it's a chance to make sure nothing's fundamentally changed in the school district in six months. And so on the overall quality of education, no change. 90% rated favorably, 7% unfavorably. The excellent rating is the key. It tracks well to what it was in 2018, but it is 15 points higher than the norm. Minnesotans are difficult graders, they always have been, always and will remain to be. Excellent is a hard standard to achieve. So the norm on that right now is about 21%, okay? So you have about a third of the folks here feeling enthusiastic about the quality of education, while nine out of 10 feel positively about the quality of education. What do folks like most? Your residents fall into three categories and they're pretty much equal. Well, what leads the list is good teachers, the personnel set silo, I like to call them three silos. What actually, if you combine it, the curriculum program base folks at 17 and 12, so 29%, almost 30% focusing on the programs and offerings. You do have 26% or 25% pointing to the academic quality, what's actually happening in the classroom. And so with, when you're talking about facilities, it is always important because there are very few school districts, well, there really aren't any anymore. There used to be a few that, you know, it was just, you had to have a bright new shiny building to have a bright new shiny building. It is essential to tie now bonding to what and how it's going to impact the students' academics, but also you have the ability to show how it's going to expand the curriculum and program offerings with the improved facilities that are offered. If we ask what they like most, we always follow up with the most serious issue. 20%, one in five stated lack of funding. This is a growing concern. It's going to be interesting to see what comes out in the school districts that are starting surveys now, since the legislature finished last night or today, maybe. But there appears to be resolution from the legislature and if there's any kind of perception that perhaps funding has been improved from the state level. We don't have that information yet. Oh, I'm sorry. 18% talked about large, large class sizes as a top concern, kind of leading in. And you're going to see a concern later on when we look at messaging on enrollment and growth in the district, that people are aware of what's happening. High taxes, 14%, a little bit below the norm of 18%, but one in seven are saying taxes are a concern. We'll look at taxes more specifically. They haven't abated, they haven't increased. You do have a borderline hostile tax climate. It's something to be cognitive of. And at the bottom, the nothings. Your boosters, pretty much the same what it was in November, and those folks, they see no problems. Everything is wonderful here and they're positive throughout. They support the referendum, they support the finance, the financial spending, the excellent quality of education. The norm on the, the boosters, we call them in a district right now, is eight to nine percent. So you're twice the norm on the nothings, the core boosters that see no problems in the district. We looked at three specific perceptions and we, we go back to these simply because, you have a question?
Yeah, back on the like side, actually. A little curious where the differentiation was between good academics, broad curriculum and excellent academics. Is good versus excellent academics simply a rating for what people found?
It's verbatim for what they're saying. And we always, it's, it's an open-ended question. Both the like most and the most serious issue questions are open-ended. So what do you think is the, what do you like most about the district? They can tell us anything and we code them, collapse them. But we've always differentiated between excellent and good, as I mentioned, because when we set up a rating system, excellent is hard to achieve.
And so then, do you have an idea of what they meant when they said broad curriculum versus good academics? Are the two connected at all or?
Well, oftentimes they are, but what, and they can tell us seven different things. What we're coding is the first thing they say that's telling us what has the most impact. So is there, absolutely, there's a connection in people's minds, but this is only isolating their number one answer.
All right.
Okay. Now, the specific perceptions. Does this school district spend taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently? It was 68%, moved up to 71%. Norm on that is about 55% still. You're running 16 points higher than the norm. Do you consider a tax increase only as a last resort? 66%, up one point. Both of those are not statistically significant, but it didn't drop. That's the key portion of it. Norm on that is about 52%. So the district has very strong financial credibility when you talk about current spending, but you also talk about considering all the possibilities. You just don't go out and say, hey, we need a tax increase. You're deliberative, shall we say, and the residents appreciate that. Now, the last question on the, on this slide is, the schools are a good investment and I would support a property tax increase to protect that investment. So what we're doing with this question is understanding what is the core opposition? We haven't talked at this point, whether it's an operating levy or a bond referendum, if it's $50 or $50 million. We have not told them anything. Who is going to disagree with that? 22% down a little bit from last fall's survey said they would not support a property tax increase. It's one of the lowest we have over the last two years. That normally is somewhere between 28 and 33%. You're, basically, your core opposition in concept at the outset is 22%. Now, on the most serious issue, you saw high taxes came in third. When we asked specifically, the two green bars are comparing their perception of total property taxes. So last year, 55% said they were high. This year, this year at this point, 53%. No statistically significant change, but it is, anytime we go above 50% on the high and very high category, we consider the district to be a hostile tax climate. It just depends how high up. One district is still, and then over the last 18 months, 77% very high and somewhat high. That's a very difficult environment to go out and ask for a funding request when, you know, four out of five people think their taxes are already high. There's been really no change on the perception of school taxes. 45% last time thought they were high, 45% this time think they're high. What that's telling us is because it's lower than their perception on total taxes, if they have animus on property taxes, it's not focused at the school district, okay? If it was, it would be higher than their perception on total taxes. So the animus is focused at the city or county. We don't know which one. Back when I started doing this 25 years ago, we asked, who do you blame? And cities and counties didn't like that. So now we just ask total in school taxes and we can understand whether the focus of their discontentment is focused at the school district. Are the schools adequately funded? Your folks are stable on this one. And since you're not talking operating levy, that's okay at this point. This is a facilities discussion you're having. But you can see, it's pretty divided in the community. 53% think you're adequately funded, 35% don't think so, and 13% don't know. So right now, you know, the tipping point, it's, it's declining and it has been declining. We've seen this going across the state, the perception that the schools are not adequately funded as they were, you know, two years ago, the norm on this was 60 to 65%. It's starting to regress.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Oh, is there a breakdown by, did you happen to do a breakdown geographically on the adequately funded question?
I can, yes. We, with the areas at the end, I could cut the data any which way.
It'd be interesting to see that.
Okay, more than happy to. An overall evaluation then of financial management, it was 59% this time, 61%. Very strong. Norm on this is 50%. And that's, there are districts that have more people rating them unfavorably on financial management than, than favorably. So comparatively, it's strong historically, but more than, you know, 10 points higher than the norm. On all the, you know, when you are talking about a referendum request and going into this, it's all about political capital. You have to have political capital in order to burn, in order to have a referendum, because a referendum puts the district under a microscope and it burns political capital. You have it and you have it specifically on financial management. People trust the district on how you're spending money. Now, like I joke with all my clients on this slide, people always feel bad because you folks are living the facilities discussion, but the broad community is not. And so communication does need to be shared with the fact that this is a broad, comprehensive process you've gone through. At this point in time, only 6% said they're watching it very closely, 45% at least somewhat closely, but the flat majority are not really following it closely at all, okay? More communication. You're going to see that it's an important message to have out there and for people to understand where this plan and how it materialized. Now, tapping into a little bit of more specifics on trust with the district, whether they are following it closely or not, at a baseline, do they think that the district, the board, the board administration have done a good job of involving the community? 68% say, yes, you have. Do they think and believe you'll come up with a plan that benefits students and staff? Absolutely, 72%. Will you come up with a plan that's fair to taxpayers? Now, this one's always going to go down because people are very, as we saw, tax sensitive. You still have a majority, 57% saying, yes, you will. There's trust across the board. There just has to be more information out there about the process. Now, the housing growth, the first chart on this, ask people, over the past five years, from what you've seen, do you believe housing growth has been increasing or remaining the same? 69% believe it's been increasing. So they have seen it in the district and believe that to be the case. Now, even more importantly, do they expect the housing growth to continue for the next five years? Well, 74% believe it will continue. The story, you don't have to tell people that this is happening. They've seen it happen, they have the expectation that it's going to happen. And interestingly, when you ask those that have seen, that expect the housing growth to continue, do they believe that the schools have enough room to accommodate that growth? Only 17% say yes. Now, we asked the question a little bit differently in the first survey. And at that point in time, we had about 17% say that you didn't have enough room. At this point in time, if we put this puzzle together, you have about 44 to 45% of people saying you don't have enough room. And you have a significant portion of people saying they don't know. Okay, so it's already started to change in the discussions, the materials, the communications going out there. And you're going to see the power of the message on enrollment and housing growth leading in, in a few slides. The tax increase predisposition, if they heard that you're having a, going to ask for a property tax increase, would they be for any? Would they be against every single one? Or are they persuadable for some and against others? You actually, this time, are a plus two. You have 2% more support, core support than core opposition, 26 to 24. The norm over the past three years of election cycles, we worked on unsuccessful referendums, the norm is a minus four. You have 4% more opposition than support at the outset.
You said that was on core, or that was on successful?
Successful, yeah.
The core was?
Minus four.
Minus four.
Minus four. The 4% more opposite, core opposition than core support. You have plus two. Now, though, the key is going to be the 50% persuadable. You also follow the pattern that we've seen over the state for many years now. You can see 50% of people have made up their minds regardless of the facts, because we have not told them if this is a bond referendum or an operating levy. We haven't told them how much it costs. You have people that, you know, I call them, just don't confuse me with the facts. I have my opinion and this is how I'm going to vote, okay? The key is going to be, though, that 50% persuadable. Now, we saw, we see the 24% that are against all. We flush out a little bit of the Minnesota nice that don't want to admit that they're not going to support a property tax increase by asking them for a dollar amount. And now we go to 27% saying, you know what, I won't support any dollar amount. That's manageable. The norm on that is between 30 and 35%, okay? So you're below, your community's willing to have a discussion about a property tax increase. And this is the first time we told them for bond referendum purposes, okay? It comes out roughly, you have 20% at 10 bucks a month, 22% at $20 a month, and you have 17% at $30 or more. Comes out roughly at about $15 a month. Now, that number is not set in stone. It, I say it, it's elastic depending on what's being asked for. And as we go through the next series of slides, it's going to tell us how elastic is that number. When we go through and break out the potential components of a package and we ask specifically, would you support a property tax increase for that purpose? And we framed up this survey very meticulously in order to walk them through the plan so they understood this happens and then this happens and then this happens. We start with elementary and middle school. In concept, 76% support additional classroom space at existing elementary schools. 66% new elementary school in Hugo, 62% renovating Hugo Elementary, I'm sorry. And 60, 55% converting Sunrise Middle School, and that was into the district office and for community education programs. On this list, there's no, what we would classify as a deal killer. You have flat majorities, 55% and higher. You have a hierarchy of what is the, you know, a leading indicator, shall we say, that people really are attached to. But on everything you're considering for elementary and middle schools, the community supports. Continuing and moving to the north and the south campus, 70% support expanding and updating music and arts facilities at the campuses, 69% expanding the north campus, 67% converting the south campus, and 60% improvements to athletic facilities on the campuses. Once again, the low is 60%. When I talk about, and we piece together a package with, with school districts, there typically is something that has more opposition than support in concept, okay? And when we go to the final chart, you don't have anything that has more opposition than support. On district-wide items you're considering, your folks are practical. Deferred maintenance is, actually has the highest level of support of all the components tested, 82%. Safety and security enhancements, 80%. Energy cost savings improvements to buildings, 77%. Improving traffic flow, 70%. Updating kitchens and cafeterias, two-thirds, and 60% each on updating furniture and remodeling the media centers. So as a-
Is that in order typical?
As a whole, if we go over the, the last three charts, it would be typical that, I mean, at the end of the day, converting Sunrise Middle School into a district office is seen, that's going to be a lower priority. The athletics is always lower when you put it up and pit it against space needs, safety needs, deferred maintenance needs. The deferred, ever since the recession, Minnesotans are terribly practical. They love deferred maintenance. It used to be like getting them to eat their vegetables. It's like, oh yeah, we have to do it. Now, survey after survey, since about two thousand eleven, people say, yeah, I really support deferred maintenance. It just was this change in the electorate. And safety and security, we didn't ask it in this survey, but this is not a concern that you're deficient. If we ask, are the schools provide safe and secure learning environments? It'll be between ninety and ninety-five percent saying, yes, you do. But there is an insatiable desire of, you can never be too safe with safety and security. So well, ninety, ninety-five percent say you do a great job. It's typical that seventy-five to eighty percent of residents in the district will say, I support more. The Newtown, Connecticut changed everything. And, you know, I've been to this long enough to go back. Columbine, it was just a twenty-year anniversary. It changed for about eighteen months to two years. And then it kind of faded in people's minds. Newtown, Connecticut, it has not changed since. There is an insatiable desire. So if we come back and ask for an overall- Yes?
Yeah, on the district-wide slide you just finished up. I know, you know, as you pointed out, practicality of the district residents that participated in your survey, but with deferred maintenance and security that you were just describing, those are nine points lower than what that entrenched-
Yes.
You know, core of respondents have said they're flatly opposed to anything.
Correct.
Do you think just the specificity of, you know, what the money would be used for lowered that?
Absolutely. Because, and that's why, when I talk about that fifteen dollars a month being elastic. If you have the right package that people support, you can get people to support higher amounts. You can make, you can make somebody that says fifteen dollars a month go to twenty. You can make somebody that says nothing go to five. If they understand. And so you're absolutely right in the sense, you know, if you consider and go across the, all, all three of these, if, with the core opposition, that's basically twenty-seven percent in the district. On the elementary schools, additional classroom space, only had twenty-two percent opposition. On the north campus, pretty much the top two expanding the north campus, twenty-six percent. And on safety and security, deferred maintenance, energy cost savings, it's below that core opposition. They could be brought in, it's just they're gonna be brought in at a lower dollar amount than they're gonna support at this point in time. Good?
Yeah.
So if we go through then and ask for an overall endorsement or non-endorsement of what's being discussed here, the idea of the improvements. Sixty-nine percent say this is a good idea. Keeping in mind your twenty-seven percent core opposition, only twenty-six percent said it was a bad idea. Five percent were unsure. If you look at intensity, twenty-six percent say this is strongly a good idea. Seven percent say strongly this is a bad idea. It's four to one in intensity saying this is a good idea. Okay? Now, this, this I can't give you a norm because it depends on what we've tested in the district. But this is a great place to be when you have almost a three to one ratio of people saying good idea versus bad idea. Now, the dollar amount. We test this while looking for sticker shots. And we've been, I remember, we're talking, the first time we hit a hundred million dollars in Bloomington about twenty years ago. And it goes up and up, and the numbers, it's just part of inflation and the cost of things. The three hundred and twenty-six million dollar isn't reasonable for a bond referendum. Interestingly enough, you almost had a majority say yes. Now, we really did, as you go through the survey, give them the sense of the comprehensiveness of the package. There's new elementary school in play. There's making a single high school site. There's expanded classroom space. So they were already picking up and understanding the value through the survey. It's gonna be an important portion of the communications, is the comprehensive nature of this package. To give you a comparison, in two thousand seventeen, when Anoka Henepin did their two hundred and forty-nine million dollar, they had forty percent say yes at the outset that it was reasonable. Okay? Now, the key, though, is not what the dollar amount, the total package is. Because the number doesn't mean anything. What matters is how much it cost them on a monthly basis. And so then we tell them that on a two hundred thousand dollar home, it would be seventeen dollars a month. On a three hundred thousand dollar home, it would be twenty-seven dollars a month. Now, that's, this proves the elastic nature of that fifteen dollars a month. You've had so many components that were highly supported. You have seventy percent of people endorsing the idea of what you're talking about. You basically, on the average house, it was about, it's about twenty-five dollars a month. Ten dollars more, it didn't double. But it went up ten dollars. You have sixty-two percent support, I'm sorry, sixty percent support at the outset to thirty-four percent opposition. On intensity, strong support is fifty percent higher than strong opposition. Okay? People endorse the idea of what you're considering. Now, the reason for the position and why they stated this is open-ended, they can tell us whatever they want. Seventeen percent are stakeholders. They have kids in the district. They're practical, they're gonna support a referendum. Fifteen percent, education's important. That's good, it doesn't get people to the polls on election day, but that's another thing to talk about at some point. Reasonable cost. People see the value in what's being asked for and the amount being asked. Then you get into the need factor. So the district needs more space, just overall this is needed. Then you need the updates, the new grade configuration. You have about twenty percent already honing in on something specific that they view as a need in this package. If you go down to the reasons for opponents, no one said this is not needed. The need question is, they see the need. The opponent's position comes in at cost. Whether the specific package is too high, at fourteen percent, or going back to the general tax hostility, eleven percent saying, my taxes are too high. I just can't afford anything at this point in time. So on the need portion of it, folks understand. Nobody argues there's not a need. Now, we went through a series of arguments, in support and in opposition, and asked, does this make you much more likely, somewhat more likely, or no difference in your likelihood to vote for the bond referendum? This is a raid, the dark green is making them much more likely, so it has the greatest impact. And then the total, the somewhat more likely, is the reach of the argument. Basically, all of these arguments, though, are operating, and the opponent's arguments operate in an echo chamber. That what they do is they drive supporters to support harder or stronger, or in the opposition side, opponents to oppose at a stronger level. There's not a lot of shifts, shall we say, from somebody that opposed to supporting or from support to opposition. The most, the highest impact, the biggest, we call it a switch factor. Four percent of people changed their minds on the argument that deferred maintenance projects are expected and necessary to protect the investment that our community has made in the schools. The practical side, people got, and it moved four percent. All the other arguments moved, you know, two, three percent. But the top four arguments, and once again, the north central campus being central, the north campus being centrally located, that's a strong argument on why picking that one to expand it to the high school. But then the third and fourth, that growth argument, and it's gonna be an important part of the discussion because, remember, people have seen the growth, they expect it to continue, and they don't think you have enough room. So on the two thousand new students, the message was the district needs additional space for more than, for more than two thousand new students projected to enroll during the next ten years due to housing growth. And then on the deferred maintenance, or I'm sorry, on projected enrollment, the district's projected enrollment in the next ten years is twenty-five percent higher than the current school's capacity. So those top four are very strong arguments. Keep in mind, if you look down at the bottom, the reach of the lowest argument is fifty-three percent. If we go to the arguments in opposition, the greatest impact for an argument in opposition is the tax argument. Not surprisingly, we've seen a borderline hostile tax climate, that local taxes are going up too quickly. Thirty-one percent indicate that it makes a much more likely forty-nine percent impact. It makes about six percent of supporters think, and change. They might go from strong support to support or support to opposition. There's a switch factor there when you bring taxes into play. People have to be cognizant of that portion of it. But the split campus has served the district well. That's not an effective argument. Overcrowding is only in the north, northern part of the district, and the growth is manageable. All three of those arguments really have no impact except for those that are opposed. So the reason we go through these messages, we have the clean question, the pre-test question. We saw it, sixty to thirty-four. And then we go through and test messages to see if people change their minds. And then we come back and do the post-test. And on the post-test, there was a little bit of movement. Basically, people went into more intense positions. The blue bar is the overall sample. So keeping in mind that you had sixty percent support at the outset, it goes to sixty-two percent support. Opposition is at thirty-five percent, it went up a point. You have less people unsure because they've heard more messages. But on the likely voters, and on this, going back to the size of the sample, is the yellow bar. At this point in time, likely voters are more supportive than the community as a whole. Households containing children are, have been, are, they're more likely to have been watching and following the discussion and aware of the plan, and are more supportive, so they're overrepresented in likely voters. Now, that's going to change over the course of an election. But it's always important at this point in time because if you don't have higher support amongst likely voters at the outset of the project, it's hard to get there at the end of a referendum. And so at this point, you have sixty-six percent likely voter support, thirty-one percent opposition. On the intensity, it's approaching three to one strong support versus strong opposition. But that is entirely a product of the motivation factor. To be a likely voter, you had to say that you were registered to vote, you voted in last year's governor's election, wink, wink, nudge, nudge, you always vote, and you were absolutely certain to vote this fall. You had to say yes to all four of those items. And that's where that thirty-six percent fall into those categories in saying yes. So at the outset, you think the district really has put together a plan. We saw that the community was willing to have a discussion and look at fixing facilities needs. And through the process, it appears that the community is endorsing to this point the plan that's being discussed to be put in front of the voters. There is broad support, there's no, what I call them, red flags. As you go down and break out the components, and a red flag, there will be some districts will go in, artificial turf, a second sheet of ice, where you have twenty percent support to eighty percent opposition. That becomes a difficult, a difficult thing to overcome. There have been districts that have had to take stuff out and whittle down the package because they don't have the levels of support that you have in concept. Keep in mind, you have fifty-five percent minimum support every single component that we tested in this survey. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Questions regarding the survey? Lot of information to digest. So, really appreciate you taking the, doing the survey for us, I appreciate the information, and I look forward to the months ahead.
Can you just comment a little bit on what impact do vote no supporters or those involved in a vote no campaign typically have on the data that you reported on?
But over the course of, I mean, there's attrition probably because you have to keep in mind, at this point in time, everything's great. You know, it's only, the communication out there has been, okay, we're doing these plans, we see this. They haven't focused on it. And so over the course, it's typical that it goes, it'll drop anywhere from five to eight points in support. Five, five to eight point will be the regression from the high point. Once you actually get in and go under the microscope. And you have, if you have an organized vote, no. Now, the other side, though, is it depends how strong the vote yes is. And so there are districts that, you know, we will do a brush fire survey about a month to six weeks before the election. And there's, even as you get closer, because if there's an, if there's opposition, they become very vocal in the last two weeks, especially the last ninety-six hours before an election. Because then people don't have time to respond. And so, but a strong vote yes can mitigate that regression. And so actually, at Eden Prairie, the brush fire said it would pass about sixty-four percent. It passed seventy percent. It is a fluid number, the survey's a snapshot in time, but it is impacted from outside factors to a level that, going back to the first part of the discussion, there were districts that failed last Tuesday because of what's happening at a national level. Especially in outstate Minnesota, districts made up of a lot, with a lot of farmers that have a lot of concern on trade and tariffs. And that really, a district goes through years of planning in order to come on election day and have a national issue impact. Mr. Wilson?
Further review. You mentioned it in passing, and I'm sure it's outside the purview of your survey that you ran, but did you see any signals or get any sense that there was organization to the core opposition to it? Or were these strictly, do you think, personal opinions?
The personal, I see nothing. You know, normally, and as, as we wrote up the report and look at the different demographic groups, you don't have any atypical demographic groups supporting or opposing. And, you know, and so that's where you could kind of say, like in a rural school district, if you look at farmers, if they're at twenty percent support, eighty percent opposition, you know a vote no is gonna come out of that. If they're at fifty-fifty, it's okay. Your groups, as we go through, whether it's age, it's political ideology, all of those items are within what we would expect. I would be, you know, the one thing you have, though, is that borderline hostile tax climate. And so whether it could come out of that, probably not at a broad level that we've seen in other districts. But I do think also there is a sense now, as you go with your neighbors. You know, North St. Paul just passed two hundred and seventy-five million.
Handily.
Roseville overwhelming two years ago. Mountain View overwhelmingly two years ago. You know, so that there's an expectation that it's time.
Good. Other questions, comments, concerns? Okay. This is the next part in the planning, and we'll continue on planning this process out.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Have a nice evening.
We'll move to our next discussion item, B three, which is a review of the preliminary twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget. Set to you again, Mr. Wolf.
Mr. Lozore. Yes, thank you. We reported to the board in January a revised budget for twenty eighteen, nineteen. That was accepted in February. In April, work session, we talked about budget adjustments, two point five million cuts for next year. And tonight, we're bringing you an overview of the preliminary budget that we'll bring to the board for your approval in June. This is a graphic that we've been using this year, just to remind the board of the cycle that, you know, that we walk through every year with budget. And the box indicates on the left-hand side where we are today, and so we're just, we're just ahead of the preliminary June budget proposal. Once the board accepts this budget, and then the school year will start, and things shift once the school year starts because there's a lot of unknown about next school year. Budgets are built on a lot of assumptions. And so we're, we're basing this budget on those assumptions, and it's very typical that districts come back to the board in December or January with adjustments based on reality. with adjustments based on reality. Can I speak just a little bit about some of the challenges facing school districts, specifically two that, as it relates to our political and school funding climate? And that's that the state has failed to keep funding pace with inflation for general education. And secondly, that the state government and the federal government have failed to fulfill their promise for adequately funding special ed mandates. So we've got the table here, the aid increase versus roll of cost. So a two percent increase to the formula generates about one-point-two million dollars for us. And I think Mr. Leatherman, who just reported when he was with us in the winter, said that there's this feeling from taxpayers that when the legislature gives the school district two percent, that they are adequately funding special ed. And it's just, it's not an adequate amount. To remind, to remember that that two percent is applied only to the student formula, which is about sixty percent of our funding. And so a significant portion of our funding, the other forty percent, is typically not seeing an increase. And our expenses continue either way. So just rolling up our salary schedules is about one-point-five percent. And so a two percent is just an inadequate amount. That would leave a funding shortfall. Over the last decade, the state has increased funding at an average of one-point-three-two percent. And so that is just woefully an inadequate amount. It's a struggle for us, though, for school districts across the state because the typical taxpayer sees this as an adequate funding amount, and it just simply isn't. This provides a visual of that per pupil formula, reminding you that this applies to seventy percent of our funding. But if you follow the green line, it shows funding since two thousand and three. And you can see a few times where that green line flattens out. Inflation didn't halt during that time, and our expenses, our expense growth didn't decrease during that time. But the funding level did. And so if you follow the red line, that shows where we would be with the per pupil funding formula if it had simply kept pace with inflation. That shows an extra six hundred dollars per pupil, which is about five and a half million dollars in revenue. A second area where school funding has been a challenge for school districts across the state is the special ed cross subsidy, and we've talked about that several times in the past. And again, the state and the federal government have not fulfilled their promise of adequately funding special education. The percentage of funding the state pays for services for our most vulnerable students has dropped over the years. And it's created a condition where school districts, school districts have fulfilled their obligation to provide services to our most vulnerable students. We've done that through general, through accessing general fund dollars. This picture, this graphic shows the growth in cross subsidy. In two thousand and fourteen, the state created a cap in special ed funding. The growth in special ed services across the state has been significant. It's not just a White Bear Lake issue. And so a cap was put in place at that time. And essentially, additional expenses in special ed were just not going to be funded. You're just on your own for that. And you can see a big jump in the formula for White Bear Lake. The state has only calculated through two thousand and sixteen, seventeen. But by our calculations, and the state will verify that early next year, the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen is up to about eleven million dollars for the special ed cross subsidy. I thought I'd be telling you tonight that we're still waiting on the governor and the legislature to come to an agreement on funding for next year, and that's partially true. But they've come to an agreement on the basics of the budget. And as that affects public education, we don't know the answers to it yet. But they have communicated that they've agreed to two percent each year of the biennium. So in terms of what that total amount of the education package is going to be, we don't know that yet. We don't know about special education, but we're hearing some signs that some kind of expenditure or allotment toward the cross subsidy is possibility. In terms of the safe school and voluntary pre-K and school readiness plus, we don't know what the legislature is going to come up with. But they passed the lights on bill over the weekend. They came to a base agreement on the budget. And so now, they did some meeting today, but it sounds like they didn't make a lot of progress today. It was just kind of setting the ground rules. And I believe Thursday, they're going to get to work on, trying to get the details ironed up. This is important because a budget, preliminary budget, is built on assumptions. We don't know all of what our revenues are going to be. We can make really educated guesses. We built our preliminary budget on a two percent increase, and fortunate that that's how it panned out. That's what it looks like it's panning out. One of the first assumptions we use when building the budget is our enrollment. We're in a really unfortunate, we're in a really fortunate enrollment trend in White Bear Lake because that bar continues to increase a little bit every year. And based on our demographic projections, we're going to see that over the next decade as well. Yes?
Yeah, back on your legislative slide, it looks like you updated it to show the two and two for each year in the biennium. Do you remember, I think originally, when you showed what the Senate wanted to say? That was at point five percent for each year?
Yeah, the Senate, yeah, the Senate's right there, point five, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
The budgetary is five hundred and forty-nine. The budgetary is five hundred and forty-nine. So the final deal is five forty.
Okay.
So we know that much. But we don't know, beyond the formula, we don't know all the rest when we divide it up.
All right. Thank you.
This table shows our enrollment, again, broken down just a bit. You can see that in all the areas of our enrollment, we're seeing growth over that period of time. So it looks good. And at the end of that, those, in the last year, you start to see that jump at secondary. We know the secondary climb is going to be later. We're seeing it already in the elementary, and we're going to see it more significantly later in secondary. By the twenty-two, twenty-three, it starts to jump. By the end of the decade, nine-twelve is projected to be closer to the thirty-four, above thirty-four hundred students. The second basic assumption that we make when building the budget is around the per student formula, two percent. I referenced earlier, and that's what, that's the number that we're with. That's the number that the legislature has agreed to. So feel good about that. In the final two years of our projections, we just set it at one percent, being conservative in that number. This page is really the, kind of the overview of the budget. And it shows, that first line showing our beginning fund balance. That's all fund balance, so assigned, unassigned, restricted fund balances. And as we shared in our December audit report and at our revisions for two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, there's some spend down of the fund balance, leading us to next year with two-point-five million dollars in budget cuts. In terms of, and looking at column three, you can see the expenditures are listed at one-hundred-and-twenty million, two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand. With the adjustments, one-point-nine-eight, that's what we put in for, as a conservative number. So we feel good about the amount that we're projecting. So our expenditures then are one-eighteen, two-sixty-eight. And that leaves us with a five-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-dollar expenditures over revenues next year. So that number is what we'll keep an eye on. But part of the two-point-five million in budget cuts is a one-time budget cut, a four-hundred thousand in carryover budgets. So we don't want to apply that to a second year and come up short. So we're just going to be careful with it, apply two million dollars worth of the cuts, assuming that we may have half a million dollars the following year with budget cuts, and see where we're at. But this is looking ahead to two thousand and twenty-one, then. And we make the five-hundred-thousand-dollar adjustment in two thousand and twenty-one. And then that year, we begin rebuilding our fund balance.
Mr. Chapman?
Yeah, Tim, I keep forgetting, what is our fund balance percentage that we're?
Yeah, the district policy is twelve and a half percent.
Twelve and a half, okay.
Which is, you know, in that two months of expenditure range.
So I, one thing on that one-point-nine-eight million, that does not include the fund balance in the supplies, building supplies. That's accounted for elsewhere, so that's actually included in a separate calculation. So that's part of the fund balance calculation, which would bring that, it's not an expenditure adjustment. It's a, it's more of a fund balance adjustment. So that, if you add that, then it goes closer to that two-point-five number.
Other questions regarding that? Okay, I want to continue on.
All right, just a review of what we discussed last month, the April work session. Breaking down those two-point-five million dollars in budget cuts again, those district-wide operational adjustments, including retirement incentives, some transportation savings, media chargeback, and then the one-time savings of four-hundred thousand that Dr. Kazmierczek just referenced. The instructional support model change, which is really moving to one instructional support coach per site. Program support model change, looking at where we have district-level supports that we can reassign, some for, to support other programs, like in the case of adult basic ed, where we're assigning someone who's currently, part of her salary is being paid out of the general fund, and that person will be reassigned, part of her salary coming from adult basic ed avenues. Yes?
Excuse me. The move to the one instructional support coach per site, what's the difference? Should we be doing some differentiation between the larger schools and the smaller schools? And it's a lot more teachers that that one person has to support.
Yes.
For seven hundred students as opposed to two-hundred-and-fifty.
Yeah, and so at our smallest sites, it's not one. Some of our smaller sites are sharing. So our largest have more support than our smallest.
So there's not one to be one?
It's not one in every school. It's one in most schools. And Sarah, is it Birch and Hugo are sharing one?
We actually have some of ours, it's like at Birch, there is somebody that's designated at that site. But then there's going to be some support for other programs, like the tech and the LC, that smaller sites that have a designated coach will pick up some support for those new teachers and making sure that there's some support there.
Just one piece of follow-up. There would just be that, you know, we definitely brought our principals into that conversation, and there was consensus amongst our building leaders that that was the model that they would prefer rather than creating a more strict ratio for how we would roll that out. So then kind of across the board, there's a statement of, there's an amount of work that needs to be done to some extent regardless of your student population. And so not to tie it so closely to a ratio there while also being cognizant that people may have some ability to support other programs if it was a little smaller site.
Dr. Neemaster?
I'm going to refer back to the discussion last time, too. Obviously, I spoke at the end of that session about the importance of the school media program and the fact that the library media specialist plays a big role in developing student agency and supporting it. The scope of the job was described clearly in the Pelsby papers. And yet, I heard that definitely our administration has decided to completely eliminate the elementary school media program. And I have to say, that's sad. It's something other districts aren't doing. And I was very encouraged to hear the Morris Leatherman report where sixty percent of the people thought that we should be, you know, enhancing and building our media centers. And it's like, are you going to have a bus and no bus driver? Are you going to have a classroom and no teacher? I mean, this makes no sense that you're eliminating an entire program that we have never eliminated. We've gone up and down with the flow. Fifty percent were cut by Dr. Lovett to put elementary media, or elementary language in. And so four positions were cut at that point. Then as people retired, this last year, three retired, and they're not replaced, even though it is a critical part of agency for the kids as you support them. There's data, you've heard me to speak ad nauseam about that, but the data supports the fact that the presence of a library media program and specialist has a positive impact, statistically significant impact on all students, but especially for our students at risk, our students in poverty. It's important, but it's been eliminated. And I just have to protest. I'm sad, and I was told by someone, oh, this might be just for a year. This doesn't sound like a year. And it was, we're going to put a coach in the classroom for every elementary school. And now I hear four more coaches have been added, and it's actually a coach in every school K-12. So we haven't just placed nine coaches that aren't cut. We've added four, but we haven't added one thing. We've eliminated the elementary media program. And that's something important for all of our students, but especially our students at risk. And they are support for all of your teachers. So I'm just going to get that on the record because I'd like to see this change. And last time, you said, oh, we're following a trend. It's not the trend, it's the school districts around us. They have fully supportive and staffed media centers, whether it's Roseville, or Rodenstein, or Wissata, or other school districts. So we're treading new territory, cutting an entire program and an entire district for our most vulnerable youngest students.
Ms. Faye?
I just would like to, I understand your passion for this march, but in terms of, when I look at the instructional support model, and having been a classroom teacher, I feel that really supports student agency and teacher agency. So I think that in saying that, you know, what the message I'm getting is somehow we're not concerned with student agency. I see that instructional support model does support student agency and teacher agency. So I think we need to be careful in the way that we're speaking about things, that we're not doing anything, I mean, the message I'm getting is that somehow we've gotten rid of student agency, which we have.
No, it's that's an important place for agency to take place, and it always has been. And I'd like to see some balance.
Dr. Neemaster, I respect your, I'm sorry, but I want to let Ms. Faye finish.
And I just think that needs to be pointed out, that we are still supporting student agency and staff agency with an instructional support model. And I think it's just important to say that.
Any other?
On the importance, there needs to be some balance.
Any other comments relating to the budget? Mr. Wall?
Okay. We'll move on to Nutrition Services. So it's just a quick look at their budget. They're running essentially a balanced budget. However, she will be spending down a little bit of her fund balance for some capital improvement needs, looking at, we need, we need actually two new delivery trucks. We're working on trying to replace one of them for next year. Some serving line replacement, software and hardware. An interesting issue for food services was that five snow days really impacted them because it's a zero-revenue day for them. But we're still paying our food service employees. And so when you look at the second year of revenue, we actually made an adjustment to that just based on, should we have snow days? That we're planning a little bit ahead for those, how it impacts our nutrition services department. Community services, this is Fund Four. Community services has had a healthy fund balance over the past several years. And there's continued to be a growth of demand for services in communities. And so we expect to see that to continue to grow. Tomorrow, comment a little bit on that budget. Tim, are you commenting a little bit on that budget?
Yep, so just looking at our budget on the slide that Tim has projected there. So we also have many, kind of many different variables that we take into consideration when planning our budget for the upcoming year. So we traditionally are very conservative on our revenues to start the year, and estimate high on what our expenses could be. When we do have mid-year revision time, we do have a better sense of what those are, and we make those adjustments, just as we did this past year. So it does, while we do project a deficit, and we do not think it's going to end where it is, but that's where we are at, given the details that we have. Our current fund balance going into this year is at about 26%. For our role in this year, we'll probably, we guess, it'll be spent down by about 20, or down to 22, 23%, maybe 24, depending on where we end in the year. If everything happens on what we have, again, which we don't think it will be, we would still be on the very high end of the district recommended policy for fund balances around 16.4. Our department, some of the details Tim shared that's affecting the general fund, we're not immune to those either. We've seen increased special ed costs in our extended day and bare fundamentals programs. And then we've also worked hard to reduce barriers in our participation by increasing scholarships for program, or scholarships for programs around all of our youth programs, youth program. The increased chargeback where, from our fund to the O-1 fund, counts for about a third, but our fund balance, or our chargeback, excuse me, it's been about the same for about 12 to 15 years. So it's not a reasonable adjustment for them to make on our end, but it will be something that we'll be reviewing and how it will affect each of our program areas, and we'll make adjustments for those. So we are very proud of the reduced barriers that we provided for our students and increased opportunities to participate in our programs. We also know that we can't continue to project a deficit going forward. So we will be working over the summer and into the fall to determine and analyze where we can improve efficiencies in our program areas and also maximize our revenue generation in other areas as well, so we can continue these outward tables for students.
And that's it? Any other questions about the, regarding the preliminary 2019-2020 budget? Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, not so much Tim, but more Lisa. Have you addressed the increased class sizes for the special ed students with the special ed faculty and staff members? Are they comfortable with it?
We are meeting with the teachers on that tomorrow. The increase is very minimal. It's one student per case manager at the elementary level and about two students at the secondary level. So we're looking at some other ways to kind of reduce workload, and we're hoping that will kind of offset that increase.
Wayne and I have been visiting each school, so we've, not done yet, we'll continue. We've got a handful more to do, but we're probably more than halfway done. We've been visiting each school and gone through all of this with each, you know, with each staff, and given an opportunity to understand what those cuts are and ask questions.
Ms. Paul?
Just a follow-up on that. So what's the, the average caseload at the elementary and the secondary level for each of those cases?
About 16 for the elementary and 18 to 20 for the secondary. So more around 18 for the middle school, 20 to 21 for the high school. And then we have some layer programs. So anything that's like higher setting two is around the eight to 10 students, and higher setting three students is around eight students, so six to eight. So we're hoping like we're building a broader base of students at that more intensive level, so that the students that are up in that 18 and 20 range should be those setting one students that are coming in a little more occasionally. So we're hoping that that will kind of offset some of that workload.
Mr. Chapman?
Those caseload counts, Lisa, do they include, are they just IEPs, or do they include 504s?
Just IEPs.
Just IEPs, okay.
Other questions, comments, concerns? So this budget will come before us in June for approval? Is that the pathway that it's going? That's what we're looking at, yeah. Okay. And is, regarding Dr. Newmaster, will continue to work through and answer questions as they come in regarding the media specialists?
Certainly.
Okay.
Thank you.
With that, we will move to our next discussion item, B4, which is a policy update on the student dress and appearance and student discipline. Is that, Ms. Paul?
Yep. Hi, Chair Mullen, Dr. Kasmerchek, members of the board. As you are very familiar with, our typical policy review process involves looking at the Minnesota School Board Association recommended changes based on things that happen at the legislature. We look at those recommendations. We discuss that with our administrators, and we bring to you some recommendations to the policy committee level. Once we have agreement and, and from the board members on that committee, it goes to a first reading to the full board, and then a second reading follows after that with a vote on approval of the new policy changes. We did something a little bit different with two policies, because we really had some extensive conversations at the policy committee level meeting, and we wanted to bring those to the full board for discussion. In the background memo I shared with you, drawing from the recap, listened to the tape and made sure to capture the themes that surfaced through our full board discussion. And then we did some extensive review from other policies pulled together, our full administrative team. And this is the update of what now will go to the policy committee meeting. And just like any other policy, usually some additional conversation and changes happen there, but we just wanted to give the full board an opportunity to see that we really appreciated the conversation we had with the full board, and we feel like we've made some progress since that meeting. So the first policy that we looked at was the student dress and appearance policy. At the February work-study meeting, there were two main themes that really kind of captured on the heart of the conversation. One was around the statement of why don't we allow students to wear hats? If it's not a safety issue or disruptive, then it should be okay for them to wear them. And your directive to us was, you'd like us to look at more flexibility in the policy language. And the second main theme that was captured there was around revealing clothing, with the comments centered around the language is dated and biased against females. And so we had a chance to spend some time, again, with the full administrative team, both at the elementary and secondary level, and you'll see the changes that we're going to be bringing to the policy committee. And again, that's where we'll be kind of vetting and making sure that we followed, and now going back to our process that we have for the policies. So I've highlighted those changes just to give you an idea of what the conversations were grounded in. And I think all of you have that document in front of you. Does anyone not have it? Okay. So the first area that we're looking at striking some language around, in keeping with community standards, realizing that that creates some bias, just in terms of what community standards that is referring to, and didn't feel that that language was there. And so it was a recommendation from the principal group that we take out that final part of that sentence. The second place, we took out the language that explicitly said to revealing of clothing. And this was really helpful to have Mr. Mons in terms of coming up with a statement that said clothing that is disruptive to the educational process, because that's in line with really the language in terms of Part D, I mean, Part Three, which talks about the procedures for what we do when there is a dress code violation. So that was very helpful. And then the third highlighted area, the language change, head covering that restricts a student's identity, because really that's fundamentally the issue. It's, it's an opportunity for us to really think about the student experience and whether reading and academic study is really impacted whether a student has a hat on or not, but it is an issue if a student's identity, identity is concealed. And so that was the final language change on that policy. So does anybody have any questions in regards to policy 504?
Ms. Vay?
I just, you know, Sarah, you mentioned in, you know, 2A, striking the in keeping with community standards. And it's up in the purpose. Are we leaving it in the purpose, or is it going to be struck from the purpose also?
Thank you for ensuring we had purpose of having this conversation. We will make sure to look at that at the policy committee meeting.
Okay.
Ms. Paul, you had talked about the principal group?
Yep.
Is that who, or who are recommending the change to the policy committee?
I will be recommending it based on the conversations with the full administrative team, which includes the associate principals and the principals.
So were they part of the discussion over the change in the policy?
They were all part of the discussion that, that I'm bringing to you today.
Okay, thank you. Other questions regarding the policy? Ms. Newmaster?
I have one question that I just remembered from North Campus, along with the endless discussion of hats and other, other things. It was sunglasses. Is that in here anywhere? That students were not to wear glasses that obscured their eyes.
I will look for that.
Yeah. And I'm not sure if that's reasonable or not, but it was really hard. Teachers felt, you couldn't tell if they were paying attention, sleeping. Sometimes they worried about dilation of the eye or whatever.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions regarding the policy? So for this policy that will go in front of the policy committee, can you tell us when the next time they meet?
It's this week.
This week, is it, is that on the?
Thursday at 4:30.
So is it on the agenda for that?
Wednesday at 4:30.
Wednesday, Wednesday at 4:30.
Wednesday at 4:30? So are they on the, is this policy on the agenda for that?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so we'll probably see it on a first reading, probably after, middle of summer, spec.
June?
June?
Yeah.
Depending on how things go.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
All right. The second policy was our policy 506, which is our student discipline policy. We review this policy annually, and we will be taking a couple looks at this policy, but we wanted to take a first look at one of the most significant things that came up in the discussion at the February work-study session. So the themes were, consider a different approach to viewing this policy, would like to see language move away from punitive, what is our purpose to punish or support? So that was the themes coming from you as a board. And so we did some extensive review of policies outside of the district, so beyond the MSB recommended language. We looked at some neighboring districts. We looked at St. Paul Public Schools and their policy, because we had heard that they had done some, some extensive revisions around learning being central to that policy. And then we also looked at the Equity Alliance policy that was recommended by fourth member Vay. So really what you see here is only a redraft of the purpose statement. And so the stricken part was a very abbreviated statement that we had. And then this is really giving credit to St. Cloud Public Schools, because what we saw in that statement was really capturing what we were after. And so this is the new purpose statement that we will talk about with the policy committee on Wednesday.
Questions regarding that policy? Concerns?
Thank you for your work on that. That's where the new executive director of Equity Alliance is coming from, St. Cloud, so I'm really happy.
Good. Yes.
Okay.
All right.
With that, we look forward to seeing the, finding out, seeing them for the first reading in June, hopefully.
Sounds good.
All right? Thanks very much. This is a portion of the discussion that we will go into negotiation study session. So this portion of the meeting may be closed to consider a strategy for labor negotiations, including negotiation strategy or developments or discussion and review of labor negotiation proposals pursuant to Minnesota Statute 179A-01 to 179A-25. I would ask for a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, and need discussion regarding the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned to go into closed session.